So the recording, you missed Jeff's great introduction. But my name's Adrian Seltzer and I want you all to know that we're doing a school board forum for Lower Marion school board candidates. And we're going to start our opening questions over again. So it's recorded so that people who couldn't make it to Zoom or couldn't make it here in person can see what the answers are. So I want you to include this question. You have 90 seconds in your opening statement. If elected to the school board, what subcommittees do you want to join? And what qualifications do you have that make those subcommittees a good fit? You have 90 seconds. You can also add other stuff in that 90 seconds. But that question should be answered. Thank you. We're going to start with Abby.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Abigail Rubin and I, the background that I bring to the school board candidacy is that I have a background in occupational therapy. I also have a background in nonprofit management, volunteer management. I should also mention that I'm currently a stay at home mom or stay at home parent of four little kids. My oldest is a first grader at Kenwood Elementary. So I have a pretty vested interest in the school board and what it does and in the school district. But the two committees, subcommittees that I would like to see myself on are the policy committee, policy subcommittee, excuse me, and the communications subcommittee. The reason I'm so interested in policy is because I have these young kids and because they have so many friends in the district. I care so much about what happens to them and how our, how the expectations that we present are communicated to them and what the expectations are. I think the school has a really important role in growing a child. I think maybe the most important role next to their family. And I think we have to be really thoughtful about the kind of policies that affect them and why. I want to be very, very deliberate in how we educate our students. And with regard to the communication subcommittee, if you've seen the full day kindergarten signs around as you drive around, that's from our group. We've done a really good job of rallying people to kind of reinvigorate this passion for full day kindergarten in our district. And it's been a really wonderful opportunity to use my communication skills, help to go to meetings, synthesize what I hear and bring it back to the community. And I think I would be an asset in that role. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Herman. First, I want to thank Adrian and Jeff for putting this together. We really appreciate all the time and effort. From a young age, I learned the importance of the school board. When I was in elementary school, I remember sitting around the table with my mom and my dad, and my dad was complaining about something in the school district. My mom looked at my dad and said, instead of complaining, why don't you do something? My dad ran for the local school board and was on the school board for over 20 years, six of which he was the president. I saw firsthand the positive impact that he had on the school district and its children and how there's always room to be better. I've dedicated my career to public service. When I graduated law school, I was an assistant district attorney in Bronx County and Nassau County prosecuting violent crimes and public corruption. And then I worked for five years at the New York City School Construction Authority, where we had a $4 billion budget and we were responsible for building and renovating all of the new schools in New York City. For the past two and a half years, I've worked as an in-house counsel for STO Building Group, an international construction company with $9.5 billion in construction volume. I'm interested in becoming involved in many of the subcommittees, but the two of most importance to me are the legislative and finance and audit. The legislative subcommittee is what I do at STO Building Group on a daily basis. Among other responsibilities, I help make sure that the company is aware of and compliant with all of the federal, state, and local laws. I also make sure to explain all of the labor and employment laws and trends with to HR and executive management. As for the finance and audit committee, during my five years at the New York City Construction Authority, my mandate and primary responsibility was to make sure that we identified and prosecuted fraud, waste, and abuse. I reviewed budgets on a regular basis and evaluated programs to ensure that there was no waste and that they were cost effective. I examined thousands of financial documents when vetting our subcontractors. And in addition, I also analyzed thousands of business records to build public corruption and financial crimes cases. These skills and my passion for public education would make me an asset to the school board. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to thank you all for being here. And thanks to the Democratic Committee for supporting us all through this endorsement process. My name is Lisa Proznetz with my husband and three children. I live in Penn Valley. Our kids have attended Penn Valley, Welsh Valley, and now Hariden. Our youngest is at Benchmark and going to Hariden next year. We moved here because we value public education. I've been involved in the district since our kids were little, starting with the homeschool associations. I've been attending school board and committee meetings for years. I've co-led the past two, the inner school council candidate forums. And currently I co-organize the parent education series, which is a collaboration between the inner school council and administration. For the past six years, I've been leading our efforts advocating for healthy school start times. This effort has enabled me to help build relationships with administration, with parents, and with community groups, giving me the necessary skills to communicate across divergent groups, building consensus on very difficult issues. Committees that I'm interested in joining include policy, curriculum, and equity. Just want to thank you all again for being here. And I'm really grateful. I'd be grateful for your endorsement. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the invitation to join the forum tonight. I'm a big believer in the value and importance of public schools. I come from a family of school teachers. Both my parents and my grandfather were public school teachers. In fact, at one point, they were all simultaneously teaching at the same school. My brother went through the Teach for America program and now he's a high school English teacher in Connecticut. An uncle who I was very close to was the head psychologist for the Montgomery County Public Schools in Maryland. And my wife and I have had a great experience sending our two kids through the Lower Marion School District. And I myself am a product of public schools. I've spent my entire career in academia. I've essentially been going to school every day for nearly 50 years. I'm a physician scientist at Penn. I'm active in the cancer biology training program at Penn. I regularly teach grad students in a formal classroom setting and also hands-on in the lab nearly every day with fellows, grad students, undergrads, and even high school students in the summer and through some of our outreach initiatives in the department to underserved students in Philadelphia high schools. In that role, I've served on the curriculum committee for the cancer biology training program. I've designed course content and new assessment methods for the core biology classes. So I think the curriculum committee is one that I'm particularly well-suited for. As part of my day job, I also run a lab with million dollar grants. We have money coming from multiple buckets. And I have to manage personnel and equipment costs. So the facilities and purchasing committee, I think, would also be a logical choice for me. And then I'll just say this, a major part of my motivation, I believe it's critically important that there be a scientist on the school board. STEM education is a critical key component of the curriculum. It's absolutely necessary for the entrepreneurship and innovation that drives a lot of the careers and jobs that our students are aspiring to. And I look forward to the opportunity in serving in that role. So again, thanks for the opportunity to participate in this discussion. And I look forward to our conversation tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Shayna Kalish and I am running to be reelected as school director. I live in Marion Station with my husband, my daughter, who attends Kenwood Elementary, and son who will enter Kenwood in the fall. I have an MS in educational psychology from Penn State and a BA in cognitive science from Lehigh University. I'm proud to have served the Lower Marion and Narberth communities for the past three years. I was sworn in less than three months before COVID arrived in our community. And my service to our district has been a whirlwind since. I've guided our schools through the COVID response, the murder of George Floyd and subsequent racial reckoning, the opening of Black Rock Middle School, the K-458 curriculum reimagining, and hiring a new superintendent. My knowledge of LMSD and experience on its board has given me the expertise to serve this body capably and without a ramp up. I do this job in service to my community and I'm excited to continue to do so for another four years with your endorsement. In my time on the board, I've served as chair of the curriculum legislative and communications committees. I am a founding member of the Equity and Anti-Racism Committee and sit on the facilities committee. Each committee does essential work for the district, but given my educational background, my passion lies with the curriculum committee. I love getting in the weeds on academic offerings, new courses, textbook evaluations, data analysis, professional development, and everything else that makes up the day to day of what our teachers and students engage with in the classroom. If reelected, I will be the only board director to have served a full term and would feel confident serving or leading any committee I was assigned to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Rosenberg-Smolin. I have been a lawyer in the community for 30 years. I do estate planning work, which is a far cry from raising children. But I also have a child who just turned 18 yesterday. So I've just dealt with the whole process from Marion Elementary School to Ballacoot Middle School to Lower Marion High School. And I've seen what wonderful things our district can do and I've seen some problems. And with the insight that I've had from the problems, I thought I could help avoid some problems for other people. So I'm very interested on the items on the agenda for full day kindergarten. Even though I have an older child, I'm interested in the early start times. I think that we all know that that affects our children. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to help chart that all out and see how it works. I've done a lot of community work in the past, mostly professional organizations, but active in the Philadelphia Bar Association. I was president of the Philadelphia Estate Planning Council. I have a lot of experience running organizations and working collaboratively with people in the community. My mother was a teacher. I've always cared about education. I don't have that kind of patience, but I care about the importance of the role of education in the community. And I believe I could really help on the administrative side and the legal side. Thank you. Oh, and the committees, I'm sorry. I'm really open to being on whatever committees my skills could fit, but I was thinking finance, audit, and I'm interested in the mental health part of the equity and anti-racism. I actually think that should be broken out into a separate committee where we get some experts from the community involved.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Thomas. I live in Lower Marion. I've lived in Lower Marion for the past 15 years and I currently live with my family in Wynwood. I have two children. My oldest will be attending kindergarten this fall. I'm active in my children's preschool, serving on the Home and School Association Board, as well as being a homeroom parent for both of my children's classrooms. Professionally, I'm a school counselor. I have worked as a counselor for the past 10 years and have experience working with students in grades K through 12 in public and non-public schools. My job requires me to have in-depth knowledge about district policies, the inner workings of a school district, and various systems within the district. I apply board-approved policies when working with students and staff on a regular basis. I am dedicated to finding creative solutions to the many priorities that the district is currently facing. As a school director, I plan to increase authentic engagement with the community through visibility at district events and increased accessibility and participation during board meetings. I would be most interested in joining the Policy, Communications, and Equity and Anti-Racism subcommittees. My experience working in a public school makes me a good fit for all of these subcommittees. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. My name is Raj Sharma and I'm a professor of finance at St. Joseph's University. My past positions have been associate provost. I am also a peer reviewer for Middle States Commission on Higher Education and a peer reviewer for quality matters, which is a, on the forefront of online education. My oldest son, he went to, he started at Belmont Hills Elementary School, Welsh Valley, Hariden. Now he's at Trexel. My daughter started at Belmont Hills Elementary School. He's now at Welsh Valley. So I'm deeply vested in the community. My wife is also in higher education. She's at Community College of Philadelphia. I believe I would add the most value for the finance and the curriculum committee. But I would be interested in serving on the Equity and Anti-Racism Committee as well. And thank you.
And now unmute me. So our next question is a yes. Well, it's actually, hold up your fingers or thumbs up for more than 10. Okay. About how many school board and committee meetings have you attended in the last two years?
Do I get more thumbs?
That's why we need the camera. Our next question is for four candidates. And we're going to start with Shayna, go to Rebecca, Sarah, and then Raj. How can the Lower Marion School District engage the broader community, including local civics and community associations on issues affecting neighbors and their neighborhoods during the early planning stages and throughout the process of any of the construction or other stuff that the school district does? Oh, I'm sorry. That is 60 seconds.
So I have served on the communications committee in the past. I have chaired that committee. I'm no longer sitting on it. I know that we are trying. I know that there's a lot of effort put forth. But I also know that there's a lot of room for improvement on the communications that the district is putting out. One of the initiatives that the communications committee put forth while I was on it, in an effort to try and engage our local neighbors, was putting out a newsletter for them so that we could actually reach. One of the difficult problems is engaging community members that aren't on our email lists and that aren't in our school communities directly. And so that was a direct way to send mailings to the communities to do that. Another thing that we have done is we hired a company called Tierney Brownstone to do listen and learning sessions. Similar ideas to that could be put forth on planning projects.
I mean, I just personally, I know that our Facebook chats are very active in the Lower Marion community network. And I see that those are very productive for getting a lot of people throughout the community involved. So that's, that's one way. I honestly would have to study the issue more and understand the options and get advised by some experts to understand other ways to get the community involved. That's not something I've been active in. Other than writing articles and that sort of thing. I do that in the legal community.
So I think that we can work to engage the broader community by having more things such as coffee and conversation that the school board is currently doing. I think it's also important for school board members to be present at local school events. Those are great opportunities for school board members to meet community members, meet residents that have students in the schools, be able to share information about upcoming projects or planned construction at any of the schools or that would impact any of our schools. So really getting out there in the community, having those conversations, possibly engaging in more conversations during board meetings as well is a great way, I think, to engage our community more.
It is difficult. Let me tell you, as a person who has worked in higher education, I have done this many times where I've had to go out and outreach to the community and present a policy or a position. The methods that have worked, you have to have frequent communication, multimodal communications. It has to be repetitive. You cannot assume just because you have said something once that it has been heard again and again and again. And even then, people are going to come up to you, well, you know, I wasn't told about this. But the most important part is to be heard, not just telling, but also hearing the community back. And that, if we do properly, can really help us. The needs of the community have to be heard. And that is how you present the message that you want to deliver. Thank you.
I would like to introduce a book for you. It was one of the students that worked on our committee and she's going to read the next question.
Hi, everybody. Are you going to include student representatives or student advocacy council in board discussions and decisions? Yeah, yes, I did. Yes, I know.
So you know you can hold them to that. Okay. The next question is a 60 second question. And we're going to do that with four people also. We're going to start with Todd, Lisa, Jason, and then Abby. So that'll work. Hold on while I mute. So you had to know this by osmosis. So I believe this was one you got in advance. No, actually it wasn't. Given the national and now local challenges to teaching African-American history and cultural proficiency, what is your vision for diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging for Lower Marion School District students, staff, and community?
Well, thanks for that question. This is a critically important issue that cannot possibly be addressed in 60 seconds. But overarching, we start by teaching the truth. And then you need to create a comfortable space where everyone feels welcome, where everyone feels listened to, and everyone feels respected. We have disparities in our district. We have performance gaps. And they're serious and they need to be addressed. So it's with, it's lots of honest, heartfelt communication between the affected people, the students, the teachers. It's peer mentorship, it's role models. And ultimately comes down to education, which is what the business that we're all in.
Okay, so this was framed as an equity and justice question. And so this is something I've thought a lot about. Equity, is it Sonia? Okay. Equity is about recognizing that we do not all start from the same place. We need to acknowledge and adjust for those differences. They could be due to race, neurodiversity, economics, or a host of other issues. We know students struggle if they fall into even more than one of these groups. A school system without equity is not just. Too many parents have shared with me the deep pain and trauma that they and their children have experienced. And our district has to do better. School is not always a welcoming place that honors our children's needs. We talk about equity and justice, but we need to put practical, measurable programs highlighting student voices, including professional development with metrics and measures, so we can know where we are successful and where we need to try again and do better. We need to remove all barriers and support all children, regardless of their race, gender identity, income, or their individualized need, to reach their highest potential with the necessary supports. We need to strive, thank you, we need to strive to give the children the scaffolding they need to be successful. Because if we don't provide it, they won't get it. And that's not equity or just, justice.
So I think it's a great question. I think every student needs to feel safe. Every student needs to feel valued. Every student needs to be respected. And every student needs to feel empowered. I think we need to explore and promote our differences and diversity. And that's what makes our community a stronger community. I know this importance firsthand. At my company, we have a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging committee, which I'm a part of. I've been a part of for the last two and a half years. And some of the things that we've implemented is that we have speakers, we have roundtables, we have events, we promote diversity, which I think is a really important piece. As a school district, we need to provide opportunity and resources for every student to succeed.
So like everybody, this is a big question. And I think there are, there's really no one answer. But I think one thing that's really key is to build upon the work that's already been done. So DEIB now is, has been kind of part of the strategic plan for over a decade in the district. It's kind of gotten new legs lately, but it's an old effort. And I think we need to kind of build on that. So while DEI, while those individually are very important, I think we need to add even another word, which is agency. And we need to empower the students to feel a sense of ownership over their education. I think this is a key piece of what's missing right now. There's so much teaching to the test, so much teaching kind of for a specific outcome as opposed to for a love of learning and to cultivate curiosity. I think when we want to talk about real equity and equality and equality, not inequality, what that comes down to is allowing everyone to have their needs met in a way that is tailored to them. So I think we need to do that in that way. That's my answer.
So I wanted to say that equity is the essence of what I think our district should be delivering to our students. I'm a proud founding member of the Equity and Anti-Racism Committee of the Board and voted to transition it from ad hoc to a permanent committee and to hire our DEIB director. Everybody has spoken very eloquently on racial equity. I also wanted to mention that I am a firm supporter of LGBTQ plus students and staff, that recently we had some issues of some anti-trans advocates in a trans session, a session on trans rights. And I would absolutely continue always to use my voice on that topic.
We're always going to do the next set of yes, no questions. And I'm going to keep track.
Okay. So the monthly board meeting is a business meeting. Decisions slash discussions happen during committee meetings. Do you support making committee meetings more accessible by accepting questions and comments via Zoom? And varying the 8:30 start times of the meetings? And varying the start times of the meetings? Yes?
So that was unanimous. So I think they're confused. The monthly board meeting, do you support making executive committee meetings more accessible by varying the start time?
Yeah. Just to clarify, executive committee meetings are not open to the public.
The committee meetings? Yes, okay.
So varying the set of committees. Say the question again, so we can all be clear.
Okay. Do you support making committee meetings more accessible by varying the 8:30 start times of the meetings?
But those answers were unanimous, yes.
And recording all of the meetings? Recording all of the meetings?
Yes. That also is unanimous. Not all of them. Yes. Dylan's going to do our next question. I'm going to make sure. Yes. Oh, yours.
Hi, everybody.
And you have, that one is 90 seconds. You have 90 seconds for this.
A recent Pennsylvania youth survey showed 33% of LMSD students who responded felt depressed or sad most days. 24% said sometimes they feel life is not worth it. And 15% said they were considering suicide. What is the district's role in addressing our children's mental health crisis? What policy would you advocate to make a safer environment? How can you create an open line of communication for all students to ensure that policies integrate student needs, particularly concerning their health and wellbeing?
It's not just a Pennsylvania trend. It's actually a national trend. And this is something that we need to pay acute attention to, particularly because of COVID. But the trend was there even before COVID. So I can go on for hours talking about this issue. But the fact comes from where are the problem arises from? Everyone keeps saying mental health issues, mental health issues. But there are actually a multitude of factors that school districts should be looking at. For example, this is financial factors, poverty at home, income at home. Social factors, this is bullying in the classroom. If you look at some of the factors which are related to birth, like gender, race, you can look at factors which are related to possibly temporary situations, fear of getting a bad grade, not able to get into a good college, that peers are doing better than me. So it is, there needs to be a multi-pronged approach to this problem that the school district has to take. And then there is not just one solution to this, but we have to look at it through multiple ways. Thank you.
I think it's important to provide some additional context for this question. The Pennsylvania youth survey results that were referenced were from the survey that was conducted in fall of 2021. The surveys administered every other year to students in grades 6, 8, 10, and 12. The specific question in the survey was, in the past 12 months, have you felt depressed or sad most days, even if you felt okay sometimes? Students were asked to respond on a four-point Likert scale with the response options of no in all caps, no lowercase, yes lowercase, or yes all caps. The 33% represents the average of all students who responded affirmatively and should be compared to the average of 40.1% statewide and 38.4% in Montgomery County. Our district's affirmative response to this question was lower than both the state and county averages. It's also impossible to look at this data and not consider the impact that the COVID pandemic has had on students and their response to this question. The past 12 months referenced in this question were September 2020 to September of 2021, some of the most isolating months that students and adults have ever experienced. As a school counselor, I'm always advocating for the mental health needs of my students and will continue to do so for the students in the Lower Marion School District as school board director. Many districts, including LMSD, use some of their COVID SRF funds to provide supplemental mental health specialists from outside agencies. The increase in mental health staff is obviously needed, but the funding for these supports is set to expire at the end of the 2324 school year. is set to expire at the end of the 2324 school year. The American School Counselor Association recommends one counselor for every 250 students. Our district ratio is above this recommendation. Adding more permanent mental health specialists to our schools would give our students more access to needed individual supports and would allow students to continue to have open communication with staff members regarding their mental health needs. This is especially important at a time when current waitlists for private therapists are running on average six months to a year.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that one of the candidates such, such good experience in this issue because as a parent of an 18-year-old and as an estate planning lawyer with lots of clients with teens, and you know, from, from a lot of my friends in the community who have teens, it's good to know that Lower Merion's doing better than other schools in the view of some people, but I can't say that that's the view of everybody. Because I've, you know, personally had some negative experiences with, with the way they handled a mental health issue, and I've had neighbors who've had serious concerns with how their children, you know, who are prior graduates of Lower Merion High School have had problems. And so I do think that there's a problem that needs to be addressed. I'm not an expert on this, I'm an estate planning lawyer, I don't have a psychology background, but I care deeply about this issue. I know it's not just our district, it's an issue around the country, but I think we need outside help with this issue. I personally think we need to convene some people from the outside of the school district who have expertise in this area for some, for some kind of panel guidance to the board and to the administration, maybe as an ad hoc committee, but I think it's a serious issue. I think social media is a serious factor that's changed over the last 10 to 12 years. I think kids are isolated more than in the past. It's from the pandemic, but it's also from the social media. And I think we need concentrated guidance on how to address this issue. I think it's a critical issue for education and for our communities.
I'll say what we're all thinking when we hear those numbers. That's terrifying. The past few years have taken a toll on everyone's mental health, and there is no question that our students have been especially, hit especially hard and need additional support. Mental health is an area where the district already has a lot of supports in place, but obviously needs more. As a board member, I received training on trauma-informed education and voted in support of prefer, professional development on mental health, not only for teachers, but for all LMSD employees. It's my hope that we can have a school community where all students have at least one trusted adult to turn to when they're struggling or contemplating self-harm. One clear avenue we have as a district to, to have direct impact on the mental health of our adolescent students is to change our bell times. School is hard work, and going in armed with a solid night's sleep and a sharp mind can only equip them for success. I feel strongly that all adolescents need a later start time for school, and as such, I'm supporting a schedule that starts elementary in school in the earliest slot, followed by high school, and then middle school. Many students will go through puberty, excuse, puberty while in middle school and need that later start time as well. Changing start times is a vastly complicated undertaking. I completely understand that, I'm in the middle of it, but the potential benefits to our students make it necessary. Additionally, I see the emotional toll that it's taken on our educators and school staff, and when LMSD enters into negotiations with LMEA, I plan to include safeguards for teachers and staff going forward for their mental health. Thank you.
It's certainly disturbing to see results from a survey like that. And I think COVID is clearly a contributor, but it's not the only driver of those types of responses. So you know, one of the first things we should do is draw on the expertise of the school psychologists and the counselors. We have some really good people, I'd start by talking to them, you know, about the survey. Do, do these numbers surprise you? Do you feel like the students who have the need are actually being adequately identified by the school system? Because if, if they're not, then we're not doing a good job. So the school has to identify the students that need the needs, and then the students have to have clear instructions on who, who they go to for help in a safe, unthreatening, non-shameful way. And again, lots of education, I completely agree, professional development for all, all the staff, but also some, some special devoted time for age-appropriate discussion of mental health risks with the students themselves, perhaps with media divided by outside consultants. And I think it's also really important that we make sure that our healthcare professionals, the counselors, the psychologists at the school are well-interfaced with all the community resources, the crisis centers, the mental health support services, the primary care physicians, so that we can get these children plugged in as, as best as they can to adequately care for all of them. Thank you.
Okay, of all the, the topics that we have tonight, this is one that I've really thought about, and there are a lot of different ways that I could answer it, and I spent a lot of time with this question. Our students are depressed, as you mentioned, they're also suicidal, they're self-harming, they're not actively engaged in school, and we know that there are a high percentage of them that are cheating. And even though we're lower than the state, it's an alarming number. Kids are telling us that they are not all right, and through studies like PACE, Challenge Success, and other ways, we see it in their students' art on the walls. I saw an image once of a student, that a student painted, they were, they were cutting their, their skin, you know, hand, seen in one hand, scissors in another. And in one act play named Circus, which was written by a Herodotian student last year, it was the story of a character named Clown, Clown. The play was about clown struggles, and in one scene, I'm gonna use a chip, and in one scene Clown is called into the counselor's office. The counselor is wearing a pink tutu and holding a whip. Clown has clown face makeup on. There's one chair for the counselor to sit, so Clown sits on the floor. Counselor, I'm looking at your grades and I see you have an A in art. That's great, you must love it. Clown nods. Counselor, I'm sorry to see that you're not doing well in, in other subjects. I'm gonna recommend that you go to study hall during art and work on outstanding schoolwork. Obviously, our counselors are not wearing pink tutus or holding whips. But upon graduation, at graduation, the playwright won a well-deserved departmental award, but it did not go unnoticed that they were wearing clown makeup there. Our students are not heard, they're not understood, and until we are meeting them where they are, having the difficult decisions to understand what they need, we'll just keep guessing. And we really need to reach the students who normally don't hear from us. It needs to be our role to de-emphasize the pressure for achievement and test scores because it overshadows the ability to see the impact it has on our kids. Our teachers and counselors, especially ones our students trust, need strategies and supports to address their mental health. Without mental health, we know that our children don't learn. And I, I will add that I love Rebecca's idea of adding a, a ad hoc committee to address this, because we need to get this done. And with that, my time is up.
No child should feel this way based on the results, and there's no question that the pandemic left our children with emotional and social issues and developmental delays and anxiety. I think the solution is, is that we need to provide more resources to our children, as, as previously said as well. That includes full-day kindergarten, so our children can learn and develop socially and emotionally, hiring more full-time counselors for our schools, having our counselors develop relationships with the students, right? Not just being there, but actually actively engaging our students, and having regular check-ins so that they can see development, developmentally how they're doing, and have a basis. We also need to create safe spaces for our children. Last, I think we also need to provide resources to our parents so that they can learn how to effectively communicate with their children and identify if there are issues, and what they should do once they identify those types of issues. Thank you.
So I want to start by saying I think everybody had some excellent suggestions, and I have one more to kind of add to that, and this is in the bucket of policy. I think it's our responsibility now, as the grownups in the community, to really take a hard look at why this is going on. And if you read any publication, whether it's the New York Times, the Wall Street Journal, the Washington Post, you name it, the Atlantic, it's, it's, it's social media, it's mobile devices, it's cell phones, and it's tablets, and it's smartwatches. If you look at the policy, the cellphone and device policies that we have right now in Lower Merion School District, they're not great, they're not standardized, and they are absolutely culpable when you think about what you're reading about and, and the results of this, of this survey. I liken this to hearing about all these kids feeling like, man, I got this emphysema, and every time I try to run, it's like super hard, I gotta go take a quick smoke break, but I, I'm gonna get at this. This is what we're doing to our children. And I realize that I say this from the perspective of a person with a six-year-old who doesn't really have this battle yet, but I think it's our role as grownups and as responsible adults and as people who are driving this community to really take this seriously. If you read any other study, it tells you, this is, or any other article, excuse me, why are, the, the, why is mental health such a crisis? The students are drowning in this, and it's our job and it's our responsibility to change this, and I think we have the opportunity to do that through policy. And I also think we need to take it seriously, that when they come to us and say, I'm having a hard time, we believe them. And if you read the Inquirer article that came out a couple months ago, Sarah Stout, who's the principal of Black Rock Middle School, said, I got rid of phones during lunch, and students came up to me and said, thank you. So we know this is real, we know this is necessary, we need to do this.
You all did this thoughtful answers, and I just want to add, and we at the Democratic Committee also think that our students should be heard, and that's why they are helping us on the issues and policy, and also on the candidate coordination committee. So. And voter registration, thank you, Phyllis. So the next, next question is a yes, no, and somebody just taking, yes, no. Have you heard of the Pennsylvania School Board Association?
I'm a representative.
I knew this was a given for you, so. And then yes, no. Have you read their principles for governance and leadership? Okay, so everybody had heard of the, of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and we had two people who had read, right? Which ones? Todd, Rebecca, and Raj have not. Have not heard of those yet. I gave you again, so. Okay. Then the next, the next question Sam is going to ask, and we're going to do, we're gonna start with Todd, go to Rebecca, go to Raj, and then go to Jason. 60 seconds.
Good evening. Providing a free and appropriate education applies to students with disabilities according to the law. Due to the district's dependence on legal counsel and private placement, too often we spend more than if we provided the appropriate services. How would you address the adversarial relationship between parents and the district?
Every child in our community, whether they have a disability or not, deserves a tremendous opportunity to flourish. And so we have an obligation to fully understand first the needs of this child, and then first to look within our system, what can we do to accommodate that need? We can do an awful lot, and it requires a multidisciplinary approach that involves the, the counselors, the therapists, and whatever other, the pediatrician, whatever other specific needs that that child has. Now, there will be an occasional child whose needs, the, the nature of the disability is such that they simply can't be well-accommodated within the traditional school framework. And in those settings, we should do everything we can to support that child outside of the school with the ultimate goal of bringing them back to the extent that it, it is possible in, in the future.
So I would, I would just say that when there's an adversarial situation, I think that the school jumps too quickly into litigation, and I think we need some kind of ombudsman role in some situations, so that parents aren't just butting heads directly with administrators, and that there's somebody outside of lawyers arguing. I think we need some kind of ability to have other community members be involved in resolving a dispute, making an effort to resolve a dispute. I think that you could save a lot of litigation costs if there was some search for middle ground instead of going at things from polar extremes. I think there's always a middle ground. I see that with estate planning work with them, families that I deal with, and lots of married couples finding compromise. I, I think compromises are always available, but it requires listening to both sides. And I think that there's a problem with listening to both sides in our district in many instances.
I, I, I think it's an important issue, and, and you know, with, with no clear solution per se. However, from my perspective, I think we have to go beyond the legal requirement. We have to find ways to be supportive to the parents as much as we can, and, and I do understand the legal threshold, but, but for me, that's the bare minimum bar. The, the school district should be trying to do much more. But let's take a step back and look at the broader view. A lot of these things actually help with the regular education also. I'll give you an example, think about closed captioning, right? How many of us use closed captioning even though we say it was for deaf issues, right? But, but, but we use closed captions when we are watching TV, right? Think about the sidewalk where, where you have a path to glide down with the wheelchair. That's an issue, we all use it, right? So in many of these cases, the value that is added to take care of one student really, really does help with the rest of the student body as well. Think about online learning, think about softwares that are used in learning. All of these are examples which, which were used, which we started out as helping one student or a group of students, but ended up helping the whole student body. Thank you.
So through the process of, of running, I've had an opportunity to speak with many different parents, some of which expressed this exact concern. And, and the three things that I heard most were that it's a long process, it's extremely confusing, and at the end of the process, I felt that the child's needs were not met. Every student, regardless of background, socioeconomic level, or need, should be able to succeed in school. We need to create plans from a district that are individualized, that are thorough, that are thought out, and that are timely. And that's what's fair to our, to our parents and to our children. I think one of the ways we can do that is to provide early screening. I think full-day kindergarten, having it for a full day, would allow for that early screening, it would identify issues earlier, it would also strengthen skills earlier, and ultimately save taxpayer money in the long run. Thank you.
Special education is a big part of what I love about public education. Neurodiversity can be celebrated and should be. We've lost sight of collaboration, that collaboration, creativity, and open engagement. We can help find ways to meet children where they are without litigation, redirecting those funds to universal design practices, which extends learning to everyone in the classroom. My three children have three different learning styles, interests, and goals. One fits the mold and thrives with what's offered, but I've also experienced what it's like to understand and advocate for the resources that our other two children need. The lower, in Lower Merion, the gap is often, often met with parents' financial resources and time. I guess that was it, sorry.
We're back again with a question for everyone, and they, you each have 60 seconds to answer. Every school program and activity has associated expenses. How would you decide between competing interests within a large-headed budget? I'm gonna walk everyone.
I get to go first again. It's okay, I'm prepped on this. We're really lucky to live in a district with a strong tax base that enables us to provide a wide breadth of offerings for our almost 9,000 students that we serve in the district. It's rare to encounter a situation where we can either afford this program or that program, but appro, approaching what programs to approve is a balance of fiscal responsibility and providing the very best in educational opportunities for our students. In my experience on the board, the way forward is not pitting two options against each other, but thinking creatively to get the most out-of-a-perspective program in the most affordable manner. Sometimes, though, you just have to understand that things cost money. Getting full-day kindergarten has long been my animating issue. I know that this will cost money, it is not cheap or free. Absolutely, is it worth it? Without question, since I have.
Here, here's what we're going to do. I do want to get in at least this one yes, no question. Noah, would you come up?
Hi, everyone. So the yes, no question is, would you support aligning with the district, with, aligning the district with the township's carbon-neutral
aligning the district with the township's carbon-neutral goals to transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2045?
So I know that that was not a popular thing to do. I am incredibly passionate about sustainability. What I want to say is that transportation is a massive part of our district. We are required by the state to bus all of our children, if we bus any of our children that do not have an IEP, to and from school. I have already been working, I've been asking Jim Will, who's our facilities director, what it would take to get us electric buses. Electric buses, we cannot even buy one, but I am on it. It is something we're trying, but I think that that would be the number-one challenge to us to go carbon-neutral. I would absolutely support other initiatives to do that, but I don't know, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver.
So I just want to add that while I do, of course, support, I think, I shouldn't say of course, but I support going carbon-neutral, but I think we also need to have some partnership with the township in the form of more sidewalks, more crossing guards, more crosswalks, so that it's safer to not use a car or some other kind of carbon-negative device. So I think it's really important that we have a conversational relationship that supports all parties. Thank you.
So in order to make this get a little faster, I did have us until 10 after, but as they say, everybody's getting a little restless. We're gonna take the candidate closing question down to sixty seconds. Now that you are getting homework, okay? And there'll be some questions going out to you. So there's a whole section where you can like add more, you didn't have enough to finish your time to finish, you can add that, and all this will be available for everyone to see and read. Well, read. So here's the last question. And what are the most pressing school-related issues on the minds of students, their parents, and taxpayers? Do you think the current Lower Merion strategic plan from 2014 all forward, and I sent you the link so you could find it, addresses them why or why not? And if not, how would you update the strategic plan to address them? Let me see where we're gonna start.
I believe that currently the most pressing school-related issues include healthy school start times, full-day kindergarten, Black Rock sports fields, and the mental well-being of all of our students. All of these issues need to be addressed in a fiscally responsible way. The current district plan from 2014 is outdated and does not fully address the district's current priorities. Much has changed in the world in the past nine years, and I believe our strategic plan needs to be updated in order to reflect these changes. Of note, there is a section in the current plan titled, "Our Vision for the Future: LMSD 2020." 2020 is no longer the future, it is now the past. If nothing else, this speaks to the need for the all-forward plan to be reviewed and updated in order to look to the actual future, LMSD 2030. There are many areas that could use updating, and I believe that we need to engage in meaningful dialogue with the community when updating this plan. Thank you.
So I read the 2014 plan. And it's actually a really well-written, very good document. It's short on details on how to implement the visionary statement, but as an overarching framework within which to build a school system, it's still very relevant. And there's many things in there which actually were impressively prophetic and are actually more relevant now than they were when they were written. So it does not need an overhaul. It's actually a very good framework. You know, the question that you specifically asked is a little bit strange. I mean, I agree with the short-term goals, but the short-term goals aren't really relevant to the strategic plan, which is this overarching thing. And I think the pressing concerns of most parents, children, and taxpayers can be distilled down to a single thing. And that is, is my child being given the best possible opportunity to reach their full potential or not? And a critical part of that is developing lifelong learning skills, right? And with those, that will potentiate to go forth and serve mission district. You know, this is obliquely mentioned in the document, it could be emphasized. And a component relating to that, which is ripe for updating, and I'll use my chip for the last thirty seconds, there's emphasis on alternative methods of assessing achievement, moving away from standard tests to more creative ways of assessing achievement. And that's a laudable goal, and I agree with it wholeheartedly. But there's a missed opportunity there to emphasize on the importance of not only answering questions, which was the focus of that document, but more critically to the importance of how do you ask a good one? And that is the hardest part of advancing knowledge in any discipline. Like, what am I looking at here that I have not seen before? Because if in raising new questions, new possibilities, or regarding old questions from new angles, that's what we get to use in our imagination, and that guides us when learning gets fun. And that's also when the products of scholarly pursuit become most impactful. And that was lacking in that document.
So I think our most pressing issue, school-related issues for students, is safety in our schools. I think mental health, quality education, which includes full-day kindergarten, healthy start times. I think taxes, the fact that they go up every year and people don't seem to know what they're going towards. Okwa, why do we spend that type of money? And the environmental impact and the transparency, that people feel disconnected from the board. All Forward was created in 2014, almost ten years ago. Most districts conduct a strategic plan every five years. Since the strategic plan has been created, we built a new middle school. I believe we're now on our third superintendent. A lot has changed. Our community has changed. Our needs have changed in the past nine years. We've had the COVID pandemic. We had an exponential increase in gun violence in schools. We have new social and emotional concerns. And we have this lack of inclusion. We need a strategic plan that incorporates and highlights the importance of diversity and inclusion, devoted resources to meet our students' educational, social, and emotional needs. Education 24/7, which is actually referred to in the document, needs to include full-day kindergarten. We need cutting-edge technology for our classrooms, training for educators, and curriculum that is updated and current. Over the past couple months, I've had the opportunity to meet many different families, taxpayers, and they ask the same question. What's your personal agenda? What's, why are you doing this? I was a public servant for over fourteen years. I have two children, daughters, that are currently here. I am a board member of the GCC and a member of the Lower Merion Soccer Club as a coach. I have a vested interest in the community. I don't have an agenda. I want what's best for all of our children.
As mentioned, the strategic plan was developed in 2014. And it was an innovative plan. It involved tremendous community support. Is it totally current? No, but is it really amazing? Yes, it speaks about moving beyond achievement, creating student-driven schools, implementing transformative curriculum and more. And it's been a point of pride in our district for good reason. Granted, there are updates that are needed, including diversity, wellness, social-emotional learning. But I'd like to send my kids to the district that implements that plan. It includes metrics, it includes metrics too, measurable targeted implementations. Where it falls tragically short is in not having an implementation plan. In all the years I've been to school board meetings, I hear about the strategic plan, but I have never, not once, heard about specific measures being met. The strategic plan could be a living document where we indicate areas where we have grown, succeeded, failed, and tried again. I would actually like to see measurable implementation plans where we respond to the changing world, including student voice, and collaborate with the community. Thank you.
So I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone has said, but the plan is outdated and does not reflect our current needs. And I think one of the most important pieces is that there are terms in that plan, like achievement gap, that we have been talking about for decades now and have done not much to fix it. I mean, we've tried, but we haven't done it. And I think there are so many ways we can do that. So first, full-day kindergarten is a great way to give everybody the same foundational base and also allow more screening and intervention services when we're needed for students that might need them at that age, at that time. It's cheaper in the long run, and it's better in the long run. In addition, I think it's really important that we, as the school community, try our hardest to meet the students where they are and include them in the strategic plan. So obviously, their tenure is four years. So they're not necessarily going to be there forever. But their experience, their lived experience is so crucial to helping inform what we want for them. It's not fair to constantly tell people what they need without their input. And I think that's a really big piece of this. I also want to say, I'll use my chip for this, that, you know, when we think about happy people and happy students, I think happiness is not having no problems and having no obstacles. Happiness is having the confidence and the ability to deal with whatever problems come your way. Happy people exist all over the place. Unhappy people exist all over the place. The difference is the confidence and the ability and knowing that people care to teach them how to address the issues that might come their way. And I think that's our job and that's our role as a school board and as a community. I also have no political agenda. I have no political aspirations, in fact, I'll let you know right now. But I am very passionate about education for our students and for our community.
A lot of what I have to say overlaps with what the other folks have said this evening. Obviously, this plan that I had, rather strategic plan, is very well-done, and it covers a lot of issues that we're still facing today, including something I haven't heard a lot of people talk about tonight, which is the increased enrollment because they're building a lot of multifamily units in our community. I see that as a positive thing. I think influx of people from different backgrounds is good for everybody personally. But that's something in that plan, and it's something that's continuing to be an issue currently. And adjustments have to be made to deal with the influx of more students. You know, one thing that was striking to me is that, and it's kind of sad, but just our reality, when this was written in 2014, it was before social media was as big as it is today. So mental health was not a core component. So I think that there's room for updates on things like that. But another thing that I hear from members of the community with students who have used my chip, I haven't used a chip yet, members of the community whose kids are in the upper grades and who graduated, is that the academic, that on some level, our district has been resting on its laurels, and they think people coming in from other districts and also parents of capable kids in our district feel like they're not being challenged enough, maybe teaching to the test. I don't know what the answer is among education. But I do think we have to look at challenging our administration to take education to the level that our kids need and deserve. So I think that's a key issue that needs to be focused on a little better.
Now, compared to me, both of my kids love going to school, okay? I'm very thankful to be in a school district where the teachers, administrators, school board members care enough about our students and make it a happy place for them. Doesn't mean that they're not, they don't have any struggles, but they actually wake up and they're happy to go to school. So two things that were mentioned, full-day kindergarten and the strategic plan, fairness of strategic plan is there, and those issues we have to cover. But from my perspective, there are the love of learning, the habit of learning that is instilled in our students is of critical importance. I have to learn Python at my age, okay? And it's a programming language, and I'm already thinking, how am I gonna do this? But the learning has changed. Competency-based learning, maker learning, you know, the online infusion in education, all of these habits are changing. And we have to focus on those habits. How to make our kids be happy that they are learning new things and that they will continue those habits as they become adults. Thank you very much.
Be a ninety-second jobbie, and now I get sixty. Okay, here we go. The three most pressing issues for Lower Merion schools in my assessment are universal full-day kindergarten, racial equity, and healthy start times. The strategic plan all forward was an intensive piece of work on the part of the LMSD community. During superintendent interviews, we received a great deal of positive feedback compared to other districts. That said, this document is almost a decade old and a decade in which our world has irrevocably changed. An update to the strategic plan is planned already, and it's necessary. I want to speak quickly on Full Day K, which was, could fit into and all forward our student-driven schools. Universal kindergarten, universal full-day kindergarten is an issue that I have been really passionate about since I moved to this district. It is my animating issue. It is the reason that I ran for school board, and it is the reason that you see it included on presentations because I ask about it constantly. It is one of the areas where our exemplary school district does not live up to its reputation, and it will have positive academic and social outcomes for our students and take away a burden of extended care private school or delayed re-entry to the workforce, a burden that falls primarily to female caregivers. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank you all for fabulous forum, even with our technical issues. I want to let everyone know who is watching or at this point will be watching the recording that we want you to be involved. We want you to be part of the process. We want you to get in touch with your committee people and let them know which of these potential candidates were your favorite. Because this is actually a forum so we can figure out who we want to endorse. There's five candidates that, there's five openings, so it's only going to be the top five. You can also tell your committee person, if you can't make up your mind, say, oh, I don't want to endorse. I think we should put all of them out there. So this is, this is what you have to do. You have to come back to us and let us know. And I was getting there. That was in there too. Okay, thank you. It says here election calendar. The endorsement convention that we have is March 16th, but compares May 16th. So you have to get to your committee person for that. And all you have to do is go to the website, DCLMN. Just Google DCLMN, Democratic Committee of Lower Merion and Narberth, and it'll come up. And you can find, go into the About section, and it'll say Committee People. Click on the thing, and you can find your committee person there. So, and the recording will also be on the website. And the bios that the candidates graciously send in will also be on the website. So, and the answers to their homework also. And I want to thank everyone for actually coming out, spending their evening, and listening to these wonderful people that we of Lower Merion should thank for wanting to do this job that they don't get paid for. Okay?
I saw for proposal for compensation, I don't think they do with my candidates.
But, yeah, so, and they do a lot, and they do a lot of work. It's not just an hour or two a week. So Shayna, how many hours you put in?
During COVID, about thirty to forty a month. Now probably closer to ten, fifteen a month, twenty a month, depending on how many meetings. I was at a two-hour listen and learn session this morning. I have another meeting that's going on concurrently with this meeting, but I guess we'll listen to the recording after this. It's no small commitment.
No, it isn't. And we thank you for stepping up. And I want to thank everybody who tuned in, everybody who came out. And have a nice evening. And thank you to the students that helped us.
Thank you.